Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order for Legislative Session 2022-04 for March 1, 2022. Those of you that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, our Son, and our Holy Spirit. Give us this day our daily bread; give us our trespasses, give those trespasses against us; and lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from evil. Adon as the kingdom, and the power, and the glory of God. Let Jesus be the Father, and the King, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and the Lord, and the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion of the council to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any corrections seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is approved. The consent agenda has also been approved. This time we have a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Anthony Gutierrez. Anthony, look at that. Perfect timing. Councilman McCain will present the presentation.
Anthony, it's my pleasure to be able to give this certificate to and present this to Anthony. You know, all of us as people in this council, you know, at one time or another, we had to register to vote. We all end up in front of Anthony. And I think we all can attest that, you know, any question we have, anything we need, he's always there to help. And, you know, he's always served with professionalism, integrity, you know. And a lot of words come to mind, but in today, this is a good person. I mean, that's just the best way, you know, the best words I can come up with. So with that said, Anthony, I have a proclamation here. And this is with great pleasure that the Acting County Executive and the members of Wycomico County Council extend this certificate of appreciation to Anthony Gutierrez for fifteen and a half years of service. We commend you for your dedication to the citizens of Wycomico County, Maryland, while ever striving to exercise professionalism, good judgment, and fairness. We thank you for your ability to anticipate the needs of your community and for the grace you extend to the Acting County Executive, Council, staff, and citizens. This is done on the first day of March 2022, and it's signed by the County Executive and all the members of the County Council. And with that said, how about a few words from Anthony? You may want to introduce your family, too.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. My wife, Amy, and my kids, Patrick, Christina, and Emily are here with me of our seven children. And I'm the one who truly appreciates this opportunity I was given to serve the voters of Wycomico County. Many times I've said the secret to the success of our elections is not Anthony Gutierrez, it is the staff, it is our election judges, and it is my fellow department heads and their staffs. Now our local board once again has their opportunity, as they did in 2006, to cast the net far and wide and find an even better director. I wish our board and my successor all the success in the world. May God continue to bless Wycomico County, Maryland. Thank you.
How are you?
Mr. President, we did switch a couple items from the agenda.
All right.
Just to add that legislative bill. So if you can follow the agenda, that's on your tables this evening.
Okay. Sorry, you were right, I was wrong.
I was expecting.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurley.
Administrator.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 20-2022. This is to approve the relocation of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 12.06 acres in Sassafras Meadows, Section 3. Council had a work session on this request on February the 1st. And we have Casey Dyson here, environmental planner. If there are any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 20-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns in reference to this specific resolution. Seen none. That concludes the public hearing. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 20-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seen none. All those in favor of Resolution 20-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution.
Thank you, Williams.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 21-2022. This is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal year 2022-2026 capital improvement plan to allow additional funding for the construction of landfill sales eight and 10 in the amount of $1,150,000. And we have Mr. Mark Whitelock here, Deputy Director of Public Works, and Mr. Charles Smekel, Deputy Director of Finance, if there are any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for Resolution Number 21-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Okay. Seen none. That concludes the public hearing for Resolution 21-2022. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 21-2022.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
We did have a work session on that.
Yes, yeah. So the public realizes that, yes. Are there going to be any questions for tonight for Mr. Whitelock? Excuse me? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 21-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried. Resolution passes. All right. Mrs. Hurley, that means you're done for now. Mr. Mitchell, thank you.
Yes, this is actually a public hearing on Resolution 2022-01. It's an act to amend Chapter 18 of the Code, entitled Compensation and Allowance Commission, Section 3, titled Compensation for County Council Members to Provide Compensation for the Council Members, whereas the Council has heretofore received a report from the County Council Compensation Allowance Commission, Wycomico County, dated December 21, 2021, provided for in Chapter 18 of the Wycomico County Code. As a result, said report deems advisable just compensation, but therefore, Section 1 being enacted in order to amend the County Council, Wycomico County, Maryland, legislative session, that's Chapter 18, Section 3 of the Wycomico County Code, being the same as hereby amended as follows. It amends Section 18-3, compensation with County Council, commencing with installation of County Council elected general election November of 2022. Compensation to be paid with members of County Council will be $21,000 to each member of the Council, a year, to each member of the Council, $23,000 a year to the Vice President of the Council while serving that capacity, and $25,000 a year to the President of the Council while serving that capacity. In addition to the compensation, each member shall receive allowance for travel and other necessary expenses incurred in exercise official dues. Such allowance for travel and other necessary expenses incurred by the members in exercise official dues shall be provided for the annual operating budget. And then, as is always the case in enactment of Bill, Section 2 says the Bill 2022-01 will become effective 60 days after its passage unless petition for referendum thereof shall be filed prior to that date, in which case it won't take effect until 30 days following the approval by majority of qualified voters.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2022-01. Anybody who would like to make comments, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Good evening, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, a Wycomico County resident and taxpayer, as it were. I want to commend and speak in favor of the increase in salary for the County Council. I'd like to point out a couple of things. First of all, this will take effect in the next term of office, so the increase would not apply to the current council members unless they're reelected, of course. The other thing to point out, I think, is that I believe this is the first raise that the council has had since 1994, almost 30 years. I may be mistaken on that by a bit, but not by much, I don't think. However, I'm disappointed in a couple of other things. First of all, the charter limits the increase that can be made to what the Compensation and Allowance Commission recommended, unfortunately. Because frankly, I think the council is entitled to a lot more. And when I say the council, I mean the next council, of course, not this one, unless you're reelected.
What's that supposed to mean, Bob?
We don't count.
But the point of the matter is that a lot more is required of the council than I think that this commission took into account and probably realized. I had the advantage of, for a number of years in law practice, watching the council, sometimes appearing before it, and more recently, for several years, being the council's attorney. So I have a pretty good feel for what council members need to do to effectively operate as council members. And the pay, the argument can be made, of course, and it is, that, well, you should look at this as a public duty and not worry very much about the compensation. But the practical aspect of being a council member involves a lot of time, both in this room and also on the telephone and in your home or office, wherever that might be. A lot of time is involved. You can look at this council and past councils, and you can see what's happened. Most of the members these days are self-employed or retired people who can adjust their time to be at the meetings, particularly daytime meetings. And at least half of your regular meetings are in the day, and many of the other meetings are in the day. For example, when you have your budget work sessions, they're almost always in the day. Council members also serve on boards of the various agencies, Airport Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, et cetera. Many of those organizations meet during the day. So a lot of daytime effort is required. And most people who are not self-employed, who work for someone, the school system, Purdue, whoever, they cannot normally get off during the day. Yes, in a few cases, they can. And there are some people who work for organizations that can more or less set their own times. But most people can't. So anyone who would be wanting to be on the council is going to have to, if they are not self-employed, most likely have to strike some arrangement with their employer, and it may very well involve reduction in pay. That's, I think, the prime reason why more money is needed, to increase the diversity in terms of the general employment of members of the council. So there's a very valid reason to do this. As I say, I think the committee, and I see that some of them are here, maybe they can address this later, didn't really appreciate this. But I will tell you, and I've looked into this, that in every county except this one, the pay of a council member, I'm talking about the base pay now, not what the president gets, is at least 25% of what the executive makes. That's true in the smaller county, Cecil County. It's also true in Frederick County, where they've increased both recently, the salary of the executive and the county council members. So you have about a four to one ratio. When you get into the larger metro counties, it's even higher. In many of those counties, council members get sometimes as much as 50% or more of what the executive makes. Now, that, I think, is a rough comparison to make. Right now, at $16,000 versus $85,000 for the county executive, we're somewhat under 20%. The recommendation by the commission to increase the executive salary by 46%, $39,000, but only $5,000 for the council, reduces that ratio even further to approximately 13%. So, I mean, to me, this shows how unrealistic the commission's recommendations are. But to get back to the county council, I wish there was some way that the $5,000 recommendation that they made could be exceeded because it's long overdue. I don't know whether, since this is in the county code, there's some way that could be done. I haven't looked into that. But I do know what the charter says, and at least when you read the charter, it suggests that it cannot be any greater than what was recommended. So in any event, I strongly support at least $5,000, and frankly, it should be more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have notes on my phone, so. Good evening. My name is Monica Brooks. I am a resident of Wycomico County, and I am Environmental Justice Chair for Wycomico County NAACP. So I'm here to follow up, and I'm thankful that my president is here, Amanda Hopkins. I'm following up regarding the proposed earth care project.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mrs. Brooks, that's my mistake. I should have reiterated.
It's the regular public comments, right?
Exactly.
I thought it went awfully fast. Okay, I'll be back. I said, wait, what?
That's my mistake, yeah. Thank you, thanks.
Hold that thought.
Don't go anywhere. So any other continued public comments on Legislative Bill 2022-01? All right. Seen none. That concludes the public hearing for Legislative Bill 2022-01. Entertain a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill Number 2022-01.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Hurley does not require a supermajority, I understand, correct?
This one does not.
Okay. We will do a roll call, starting with Mr. Dodd.
Yeah, I want to thank the commission for their recommendation. I appreciate the work that they put in, and I do realize that it's not for the current council. It's definitely for the incoming council that gets elected. At this time, I feel compelled to abstain.
Mr. Holloway.
Mr. Taylor, you almost talked me into voting for this. I'll tell you what, what a great speech. I am running again for county council. I know it's for the next county council, but I am going to vote no and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway. Vice President Davis.
Aye.
We will, Councilman Ackley, you're on the Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Okay, yes, you're next. Thank you.
Aye.
Okay. Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilman McCain?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have five aye, one no, and, now, that can't be possibly right. Yeah, one abstention, sorry. Yeah, one abstention, for the record. So Legislative Bill 2022-01 passes. Thank you very much, and thank you to the committee. I know there will be some representation coming up here shortly from the committee as well. All right. So the next item on the agenda, Ms. Hurley, we're back to you, but there's been another change here, correct?
Actually, it's the introduction of Legislative Bill 2022-02.
Right.
And Mr. Mitchell is going to be handling that one.
But for the public to know, it's no longer a resolution, because initially it was on as a resolution.
Correct, yes.
But it has been changed, for your information as well, to a resolution. So that being said, I would entertain a motion to introduce Legislative Bill 2022-02.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Motion is second. That leads to discussion, if you could. Mr. Dierker? Mrs. Morris?
Do we have a first reading of this?
Yeah, don't you have to?
If you'd like, yes.
Yeah. This is Legislative Bill 2022-02. It's an act to set the annual salary for Wycomico County Executive, whereas Section 406 of the Charter provides for Compensation Allowance Commission to submit to the County Council its recommended changes in County Executive's compensation within 15 days of the fourth year of the executive term, whereas 406 Charter states that county may, by law passed by a firm to vote, a majority plus one of the members adopt the recommended compensation or reduce compensation or may not increase the recommended compensation, whereas County Compensation Allowance Commission has recommended, based on inflation market differences, to increase the County Executive's salary to $124,000, commencing with a 2022-2026 term, whereas the council has taken into consideration economic factors relative to the county's current financial position, Section 1 being an act ordained by the County Council, Wycomico County, Maryland, legislative session. The annual salary of Wycomico County Executive shall be as follows. County Executive shall receive compensation of not less than $124,000 per annum. And then it has the normal, Section 2, that will take effect 60 days from final passage unless petition is filed, in which case it will be 30 days following approval, majority qualified voters.
I thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. Good evening. If you could let the public know, state your name and your positions, please.
I'm Mammo Dierker. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'm the Chair of the Wycomico County Compensation and Allowance Commission.
Sharon Morris. I'm a member of the commission.
Great.
And on behalf of the other members of the commission, when we came to you a few weeks ago to make our presentation, we shared with you that we looked at seven different scenarios, and we looked at the best practices suggested by Mako and as well as the National Association of Counties for making these determinations. Based on that, we came up with a range of possible compensation amounts. We decided to discard the one dealing with private sector because that is extraordinarily high. The equivalent would be $236,000. Obviously, that's not in the realm of possibility for this position. The remaining six scenarios range from $117,000 to $154,000. After long deliberation, the commission unanimously recommended the number you have in front of you. The only new piece of information we are going to share with you, and then open up to any questions you might have of us, is in 2006, when this position was created, the compensation level, $85,000, was 2.66 times the Wycomico County per capita income of that date. Today, Wycomico County per capita income is $44,184 as of end of 2020, which is the data we used in November and December '21 when we were doing our deliberations. If you applied the very same factor, the compensation would be $117,419, which is why we had presented as one of the scenarios. The factor that we kept in mind when going to 124 is that from 2006 to today, the size of the county has increased, the number of residents, the budget has increased, the total value of the properties have increased, the total revenues have increased, and therefore the county budget has increased. So we took that into consideration when we did that. I believe that that is some of what we wanted to share with you, so we are ready to answer any questions you might have of us.
Thank you, Mr. Dierker. Appreciate it very much. Council comments. I believe right now, as the bill is being proposed for introduction, that the salary is $124,000, which was the recommendation from the committee.
Correct.
Any discussion from council members? Mrs. Ackley, if you have any comments to make, you'll have to just break right in, okay? Because I can't see a hand or anything to that effect, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just make a quick comment. First of all, I just want to thank all of you for your work. I mean, I know you diligently worked on this. I also know that four years ago, it was very similar, I can't remember the exact amount, it was very similar.
No, it was higher.
Yeah, it was actually higher, right.
The recommendation was $140,000. This commission was more conservative in its approach, and the very issues about the county's financial position, the recession, what was happening with COVID, was taken into account. So the recommendation was reduced from the $140,000 recommendation of four years ago to the 124 this year.
Thanks for that clarification, but also, my understanding is your recommendation of this was unanimous.
It was unanimous. That is correct.
And I know the one before was unanimous.
Correct.
And the one before that, four years, I actually served on that one.
I remember.
Yeah, and that was unanimous. So this has been recommended numerous times. It's been certainly acknowledged that the current pay for the position, for the requirements of that position, has been grossly inadequate. And, you know, it's time for it to be commensurate with the job. This is about the position, and, you know, it's, you've done your job, you've presented the data, and you'd certainly like to see us go with the recommendation. That's why we appointed all of you.
And we're just number crunchers. We don't make any value judgments one way or the other. Any value judgment you see is that reduction from 144 years ago to 124 now because of the environment that we're in.
Any other comments?
Four years ago, some of the same council members were sitting at the table, and the pay was $85,000 a year. No one on the council at that time endorsed raising it from $85,000. So we're four years later, and of course, apparently, we've got some folks that want to increase it, you know, to 124. I don't know what has changed from four years ago. Basically, I would say that we're probably not doing as well because of the COVID situation and the inflation problem that we have now. So like I say, four years ago, there was no appetite whatsoever from any council members to raise it any, not, you know, and of course, it was amended last time to go to 100,000, and that's why we're here tonight, I guess.
I would say, Joe, that because you were on that council, and so was I, and so are other members here, that you and I both know why it was not raised. And I personally think it was more of a personal issue than it was an actual issue of deciding what the rate should be. I think the idea for this year, you know, being in 2022, I would say we're trying to correct right or wrong, in all honesty.
Eight years ago, we didn't do it either, so.
Well, you're talking about the last time it came before this council, which was only four years ago. We all know what happened then, and I think really the responsibility of this council this time is to right or wrong. I think also that it was requested from a member of the council, I don't know if it was requested from you, Joe, for a cost of living index based on the last few years, since 2006, which the last raise was implemented, excuse me, since the position was implemented at $85,000 in 2006. And receiving the cost of living index over that period of time, the recommended pay for 2020, oh, excuse me, for 2022 would actually be $125,667. And keep in mind, too, that this also goes through 2026. The salary range stays the same. And in 2026, based on the cost of living index, then the executive should be getting So I think we're right. I think that the committee has always been right within the target range.
Were you making an amendment to that, John?
Well, you know, we can't increase it, right? Any further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor of introducing Legislative Bill Number 2022-0- Seeing none, all those in favor of introducing legislative bill number 2022-02, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Who's opposed, please? Joe and Larry.
And myself.
And Nicole. So we have four and three to introduce legislative bill number 2022-02, as it sits. Mrs. Hurley, Mammo, I think we're there. That is the introduction. From here, we'll do a public hearing, and then we'll have the formal vote on the bill itself.
Correct.
Correct. At that time, we may choose to bring you back, if you, you know, if your time allows you that, Sharon and Mammo both.
We're always at your service, whatever questions you have, either during a meeting like this or through email.
Right.
Counsel is at your service.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the public hearing on that bill can be held on April the 5th at 6:00 PM.
All right, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is submission of appointments to the Wacomiko County Youth Advisory Commission. In accordance with Charter Section 315, Title Confirmation of Appointments, the acting county executive has submitted four names for confirmation to the Wacomiko County Youth Advisory Commission. The purpose of this commission is to advise the Wacomiko County government by providing feedback and recommendations regarding public policies and programs that affect the future of Wacomiko County youth, and to take a leadership role in creating meaningful change. Next is the approval of the consent agenda for the boards and commissions, and on that consent agenda, we have resolution number 22.
I'm going to change the agenda on you. I'd like to do individual resolutions, as opposed to a consent agenda.
Okay.
I apologize for not telling that earlier today.
Okay. So the first resolution then would be resolution number 22-2022. This is confirming the appointment of Catherine O. Beecham as at-large member of the Wacomiko County Youth Advisory Commission.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 22-2022.
Say move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Josh.
I am the council representative on the Wacomiko County, the Youth Advisory Commission, and we've been trying to get, we've had a good group of folks a little over a year ago that's helped start this off, so then we went through a couple of folks, young folks in our society, they graduated, they do what young people do and move on, so now we have a new slate of folks who are, have applied, who want to be able to be a voice for the county. There is a, I should just mention, there is a state Youth Advisory Commission, and they, so Wacomiko County can have its voice here, our folks here, and then also through the state at RADA, so it's a good group of people. I'm glad to get to this point where we can actually start approving them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. Any other discussion? All those in favor of resolution 22-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number 23-2022, confirming the appointment of Katie Mitchell as at-large member of the Wacomiko County Youth Advisory Commission.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 23-2022.
Say move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number 24-2022, confirming the appointment of Bella Truitt as at-large member of the Wacomiko County Youth Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 24-2022.
Say move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number 25-2022, confirming the appointment of Isabel Cockey as at-large member of the Wacomiko County Youth Advisory Commission.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 25-2022.
Say move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number 26-2022. This is approving a memorandum of understanding between the Wacomiko County Board of Education of Wacomiko County, Wacomiko County Maryland, and the Wacomiko County Stadium Authority. We have several representatives here at the table. We have Liesel Ashby, Dr. Micah Stoffer, and Mr. Jesse Reed.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution number 26-2022.
Say move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Good evening. So for the public, if you could announce your name and your position, so that everybody knows who's who there.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name's Micah Stoffer, I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer for Wacomiko County Public Schools.
Liesel Ashby, Director of Planning and Construction for Wacomiko County Public Schools.
Jesse Reed, Controller for Wacomiko County Public Schools.
Thank you all for being here.
We also have our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Donna Hanlon in the audience, and our Board of Education Chairman, Jean Malone.
Good to have you all, thank you.
So we appreciate your time this evening. The Board of Education is very excited with the opportunity to secure Built to Learn Funds in support of the capital plan for Wacomiko County Public Schools. This is good news for everyone involved tonight. We're also excited to move forward with the long-awaited improvements to Mardella Middle and High School on behalf of the anxiously awaiting Mardella community. After over a year of briefings, updates, and various meetings among multiple stakeholders, including the county council, the memorandum of understanding is that as required to access the Built to Learn Funds is ready for authorization for signature by Wacomiko County Government, and in a moment, Liesel is going to review the importance of the Built to Learn Funds from the state, the purpose of the MOU between the Maryland Stadium Authority, the county government, and the Board of Education, and how all that relates to why we're here tonight. So thank you for your time, and I'll turn it over to Liesel.
Good evening, everyone. So we're seeking authorization to execute an MOU with the Maryland Stadium Authority to receive $13.8 million in Built to Learn Funds, also known as BTL, for the Mardella Middle and High renovation project. House Bill 1, Built to Learn Act, was part of the 2021 legislative session, which required, among other things, that the Maryland Stadium Authority issue bonds for projects approved by the Interagency Commission on School Construction, also known as the IAC. Built to Learn required an MOU between the IAC and the MSA, which was finalized in July of 2021. In turn, Built to Learn required an MOU between the MSA, county government, and local education agency by project or group of projects. The involvement of the county in the MOU is a commitment to the local cost share, which has already been approved in the board's capital improvement plan and budget, and recommended by the county executive in the county's current capital improvement plan, as well as executed in prior-year bond sales. As presented at the January 18th, 2022 Joint Council Board of Education Work Session, there are three major reasons why BTL funds are needed for the Mardella project. First, the IAC is shifting to a formulaic approach for capital projects. This is negatively impacting the ability to execute the Mardella renovation project due to cash flow needs. Based upon the most recent information issued by the IAC, they would be limiting funding to a range of five to seven million in future fiscal years, which is even less than the range of 6.8 to 8.3 originally proposed and noted when we met with you in January. Without BTL, the cash flow needs of the project exceed available funding, and will put the project at further risk of incurring additional costs. BTL funds represent approximately 27% of the state cost share. Second, there was a window of opportunity to retain local control of project management, which was a high priority of the School Building Commission and part of their recommendation to the board and county. The MSA authorized Wacomiko to retain local project management control back in December. Third, given rising inflation and the volatility in the construction market, including labor shortages and supply chain issues, the BTL funds now will assist in funding the necessary early bid packages. Early bid packages are necessary due to long lead times for various equipment and materials, and were authorized by the School Building Commission, Department of General Services, and the Board of Education. Utilizing BTL for early bid packages will preserve local funding for non-eligible expenses. In short, the use of BTL funds is necessary to complete this phased-occupied renovation project and could allow for an earlier construction start. The MSA has already gone to the bond market. Once the MOU is executed, Wacomiko will be able to access funds for eligible construction costs. Regarding the MOU itself, it has been reviewed and approved by the School Building Commission, Board of Education, County Executive's Office, as well as verified by board and county legal counsel. In addition, it has been approved by the MSA and their Assistant Attorney General, and we stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions from council?
Just a real quick question, Liesel, is this, will this happen again, or is this a one-time?
For us, it'll be a one-time thing. I don't know if you recall, we were lumped in with 16 other jurisdictions. I think they allocated out of House Bill 1, $230 million to be split, so the IAC came up with some type of formula, so for 13.8, this will be a one-and-done. The BTL program is anticipated to last for about five fiscal years.
Yes, Josh.
I just want to say, I don't know if there's any other Mardella warriors in the crowd, I see a couple, but this has been a long time coming, and for those of us who, you know, have graduated, came from Mardella, this is really great to be able to see this. So I've heard a lot of my, a lot of friends from home and constituents and others who were here, you know, went to Mardella, who were really happy to see this, and they wanted me to pass on how much they were appreciated, you all working hard to make this happen, so, I'd say that, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 26-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If anyone has any comments they'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name and count any of your residents. We ask that you limit it to three minutes. Keep in mind that the purpose of the public comments is for members of the public to inform the council their views on government matters. Comments that are political in nature are prohibited, as well as personal attacks. It's not the proper form at this meeting, so, thank you. Mr. County Executive, how are you?
Good evening, John Posoda, Acting County Executive. It's with great appreciation for a job well done. I inform you tonight that David Shipley, Director of Department of Emergency Services, has announced his retirement effective April the 20th, and don't look around for him because I gave him as a token of appreciation the night off. For over 10 years, Director Shipley has been responsible and accountable for operation and administration of the Department of Emergency Services, which includes the Communications Divisions, the Radio Division, and the Emergency Management Division. The position also provides oversight of the county's emergency preparedness and response for both man-made and natural disasters. Before being appointed as Director of DES, he served as Deputy Director for five years. Prior to his employment with Wacomiko County, Director Shipley was a 30-year veteran of the Anarundel County Police Department, retiring in 2005 at the rank of Deputy Chief of Police. I understand that he plans to relocate with his family to Kentucky, and regarding the opening, a search has been initiated, and we have been receiving resumes from well-qualified candidates. I first worked with Dave 10 years ago, when I was a city manager at Fruitland, and he assisted me with the complicated and complex FEMA reimbursement process following Hurricane Sandy. Through the years, Director Shipley and his team assisted me on several occasions with emergency management advice, cooperation, and communication. In March of 2020, the Department of Emergency Services aided in the local response to the COVID pandemic. In those early days, all of us in municipal government, police, fire, and EMS will recall those daily COVID response and informational calls, and I thank David, Director Shipley, and his team for establishing and organizing that critical information network as we navigated uncharted waters. Since my appointment as the Director of Administration and Acting County Executive, it has been my honor and privilege to work closely with Dave and his team as we address many opportunities and challenges in our mission to provide the best public safety services to the citizens of this county, which is government's priority function. I would take this opportunity to advise you that Director Shipley and I have worked very closely on addressing the critical issue of recruiting and retaining 911 specialists. As I have previously advised this council and the public, the Department of Emergency Services is experiencing major difficulties in attracting and retaining 911 specialists and communication specialists. This career is considered to be one of the most stressful in the United States. As a retired Maryland State Trooper, with over 15 years as a duty officer, I have experienced, and I can attest to, and have a keen knowledge as to the stress and PTSD involved in this profession. Depending on the next call that you answer, regardless of how long you've been on the job, your life and those on the other end of the line can be changed in an instant. What the Department of Emergency Services has experienced is the same that other centers are experiencing across the country. A high turnover rate and the length of constant on-the-job training work together to cause a strain on maintaining staffing levels, but help is on the way. I will be presenting at the next scheduled county council meeting a proposed FY22 budget amendment, the details of which are continuing to be sharpened. This proposal will result, will be the result of the county executive's office salary study. When approved, it will enhance the competitiveness regarding recruitment and retention efforts in this critical area of public safety. Regarding additional public safety efforts, in March of 2021, approval for an additional 25 cents per telephone number in revenue was obtained. As provided by Maryland Code's Public Safety Article, this enabling legislation was established to specifically cover the increased cost of operating the 911 system. As a note, due to the current state of economic pressures facing Wacomiko Canyons, such as inflation, rising interest rates, and escalating gasoline prices, an additional fee increase will not be requested by the executive's office at this time. In August, I presented to this council my plan to provide $3,000 in premium pay and $500 signing bonus for new hires to certify correctional officers in the Department of Corrections, 911 specialists, and communication specialists, and I thank those of you who voted to approve these efforts. I also wanted to mention, in an effort by my office to provide additional financial assistance to aid in offsetting volunteer fire company fundraising revenue lost due to the pandemic, I placed in this current year's budget, which was approved by the council, in the budget document, $80,000 for each Wacomiko County volunteer fire company. I'm pleased to announce that those checks will be going out tomorrow morning. Isn't that right, Mr. Schmuckel? I join Wacomiko County in expressing my deep gratitude to all of our first responders. I thank you. Lastly, in a display of public support for the citizens of Ukraine, I want to announce that today, my office respectfully requested of the Wacomiko County Liquor Control Board that all Russian-made and Russian-branded alcohol be removed from the shelves of the county-owned liquor dispensaries. I ask that the county council join me in signing a letter of support making this request. Also, I have instructed the county's Department of General Services to illuminate the old courthouse in the blue and yellow colors of Ukraine.
That's good, I like that.
It's my understanding that those bottles are coming off the shelf as we speak. Thank you.
Very good. Any other public comments?
Hello, council. I'm Molly Hiligoss, I am a resident of Wacomiko County. I am also the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Wacomiko County, and I'm here to appeal to you to create lasting change and a legacy, not just for your term, but for whatever else you do. You can really make a difference through your legislative resolutions and hopefully some budgets, budget things that may come after you guys hear what I have to say. So right now, you have 200 households in Wacomiko County that have applied for community development block grant home repairs, and they are on a waiting list. That's 200 low-income families that need home repairs. Based on the current rate that the planning and zoning is able to use, the current funds that come through the federal government, some of the people on that waiting list are going to wait eight years, eight years. Could you wait eight years for a new roof? What would that roof look like eight years from now? So that's why I wanted to appeal to you to talk, so that you guys could come up with some solutions, could perhaps do a work session. There's ARPA money, I'm aware that there's about $20 million coming to Wacomiko County. If you were to today decide you wanted to clear that backlog of those 200 families, that would be about, based on a $25,000 to $30,000 cost for the repair, which may not be a roof, it might be something else at this point. It might be mold inside the home because the roof's been leaking. So you're looking at about $4.5 million to clear that backlog. And what you could do is you could create a revolving fund, so that when that home is sold, that that money that goes out to that repair project, there would be a deed put on the property, there wouldn't have to be a repayment initially, there wouldn't have to be a monthly repayment, but when that- to be a monthly repayment, but when that home is sold or transferred to the next generation, that funding is repaid to the county. And I know this works because we have a program like that at Habitat for Humanity. And just this year, two out of the 10 projects that we finished, the families sold the house or refinanced, and that money came back into our organization so that we could serve another family. So that's really all I wanted to talk about. You guys already know that the population of our seniors is growing on the eastern shore by far. It's more than, almost 25% on the eastern shore are families over the age of 65, much more than the state as a whole. So this problem is only growing, and this is your opportunity to make a difference and create a lasting legacy. Thank you.
Molly, hopefully we can get that on as a work session.
Good.
I think it's definitely worthy of conversation. Thank you.
Members of the council. President Cannon. My name is Monica Brooks, and I am a Waukesha County resident, and I'm also here on behalf of NAACP as Environmental Justice Chair. Thankful to have my president with me tonight and members, also members of NAACP. I'm coming to our council tonight, following up on, regarding the Earth Care project. As you know, last month, the Earth Care project was being proposed to come to the Board of Appeals in order to put up a facility that they were looking to get special exemption through the Board of Appeals. This particular project is something that the, most of, many of the residents that we've spoken to on this west side of town, off of, this project was slated to be off of Owens Branch Road, were opposed to this project. One of the biggest issues, not only are we opposed to the project and its potential to pollute the environment, but we had a time as residents just getting information about it. We submitted a Public Information Act request to the Board of Appeals, which they ignored. That's a problem. It's a legally binding thing that they have to respond within 10 days, I believe that it is. We didn't hear from them till past 30 days. Transparency on this project was no, and that's a problem. The community has a right to know about large-scale facilities that are coming to their town, to their area and region, excuse me, to their region, as well as have an opportunity to speak and give their comments about it. So in that regard, two things that we're asking for. One, we're asking for transparent, as I mentioned, transparency, but we're looking for the council to possibly come up with legislation that would prevent entities from just bypassing the council and the public and going straight to the Board of Appeals. This organization, Earth Care, which I find the name interesting, Earth Care, has, was looking to go right straight to Board of Appeals and get a special exemption to call themselves composters, which they're not composters. Composting has nothing to do with greases and and all, a lot of body parts and different things that they were looking to put in this, in this particular thing. They did not give community input. So we're looking for legislation to not allow groups to bypass the council. And the second part is, we're looking for a public meeting, hopefully that the council will host, so that the community can voice their opinion about any kind of project of this scale that's looking to come. The Maryland Department of Agriculture has rescinded their $2 million grant, thankfully to the voices of the people, but the, the project is not dead. So we're looking for an opportunity to have our voices heard, so that this company knows that we don't want them at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I think we, we are pursuing the option of possibly having any decisions that go through the Board of Appeals to then be required to go to the county council. It hasn't been decided yet. We're, it's still in the very infinite stage, but we're looking into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leila Borreto-Craus. I am an outreach worker and work with the immigrant, Latino, and Haitian communities in this area. I'm very concerned about many of these families while they are having health issues within the, you know, with their children, or if they're expecting mothers and they have their children born with disabilities. So all this, you know, we're requesting a public meeting, both in the scale of inputs of this project, like municipal sewage and poultry processing plants waste. It is not okay to, again, put a project which threatens our air, water, and environment. We are a community of children, elderly, and working families who have a right to attend schools, churches, and play in playgrounds where they have clean air. We have enough here with the dump and the processing plants now. There also needs to be outreach to the large Haitian and Latino-Hispanic community in this neighborhood. Many of them are afraid to speak up because they're afraid to lose their jobs or to be seen in any kind of meetings where they could be pointed out. They, we're the, we want to know where is in the environmental impact study and the health impact assessment, traffic studies, and we need some light on the project like this. So thank you for your time. And with my other counterparts, I'm happy to be here to represent the community that is hardly ever heard of.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
I'm Madeline Adams, a resident of Waukesha County, and I'm speaking on behalf of both the Waukesha Environmental Trust and the Friends of the Nanticoke River tonight. We are concerned about the approach to DAF waste storage recommended by the Planning Commission, which you'll consider later in this work session. It is the opposite of the approach favored by members of the council in their discussions so far, most notably in requiring a one agricultural siting instead of industrial siting. We would ask that you continue to focus on the following key issues in evaluating the commission's recommendations. First, do they address odor and other quality of life issues caused by proximity to residences? The commission proposes to require a one agricultural siting on the ground that DAF waste is too objectionable to store in industrial districts or near municipal districts. A setback of only 200 feet would be required in most cases, and the Board of Zoning Appeals would be given discretion to reduce even that. Second, do they address risks to public health and the environment, such as surface and groundwater contamination? There is no requirement for enclosures, berms, or other protections against spillage or leakage, and no requirement that the travelers, the tankers travel on roads of adequate width. Third, do they address traffic safety concerns? The commission considered requiring siting on a major collector road, but decided to refrain from proposing any limitation on the basis that they lack traffic expertise. We submit that the commission's approach does nothing to fix the zoning approach that gave us the 3 million gallon open-top tank on Porter Mill Road. Indeed, it would allow that situation to spread throughout the county, except in industrial or municipal districts. What we are talking about is waste management, not agriculture or the right to farm. We urge the council to continue to focus on the real issue. Should we turn our county into a magnet for the unregulated storage of DAF waste, the DAF waste, that is not even produced here, even as other counties in the area are imposing restrictions? Given the known human costs and the public health and environmental risks involved, the answer clearly is no. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.